By the following Friday, which would have been January sixth. Tim Roy was at the meeting to discuss the new Allen lines. They are asking for an annual commitment of thirty-four thousand five hundred each of the next three years. The board made a motion that they were, would be open to this on an annual basis contingent on all communities staying in the project. Joan made a motion approved seconded by Rich and passed. Tim was opposed to this motion. Kevin brought up by the fire department was currently in need of upgrading their mobile radios to eight hundred frequency to the following, to follow the county. He said that the fire department realized it wasn't too responsible to the town was asking for any support on the radios. Don mentioned that he would be talking to the county commissioners and would ask them for help. Joan made a motion that if the county commissioners couldn't spare any money, that the town would purchase the five mobile radios for the fire trucks from the public safety money. Rich seconded the motion and passed. Nothing further discussed. Tim made a motion seconded by Joan and passed.
Any additions or corrections? Being then we need a motion to accept the amendments is read.
Are they doing a motion?
Got a motion and a second. All those in, in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Clear pass. Okay. Let's go to you, we'll go to you guys first. That way you can get. Yeah.
Well, I'm really set my insurance. I'm a deputy chief of the department. And we came down tonight, just to kind of answer your question. We had a contract, uh, concerns, anything like that. And then also I brought down, I don't know if it was caused by the cause or giving out, they were here with the people who started doing that on the contracts. So, and I don't know if that was on the hundred pound line. I don't know if it started that on the hundred pound line, if that's why I brought that along.
Okay. I don't think it was, but.
Well, and, and what we had done is, um, it's not the whole place. It's fifty percent of the place for the car and the equipment, which is approximately, the cost to do that's about sixty-two thousand dollars. So, it's fifty percent of that, and then that's spread four year, over the four year life of the contract.
Okay. When you and I had talked, I, I had, I had said that we wanted to have some, uh, and I don't know if the, if you, if you, we should do it in the contract, we probably should, that where the person will work at least fifty-one percent of the time at, at second and third shift. And then one day, two days on the weekend of month, which would probably be a Saturday night more than likely. But, but that's not set in stone either. I mean, I don't, I don't, is that, are that an issue or?
We, we just, in fact, we just discussed it today as far as putting it in the contract or not. The concern that we have is if we put it in the contract, we post the job and nobody puts in for the job because it's in the contract. Then we'd have to rewrite the contract completely and we'll be covered by months down the road for the deployers to do that again. And so, what would probably be better is not put it in the contract, but when we do the interviews of the officers, they understand that and that's part of their agreement in doing it. And you guys done set the hours. So, they would know that going in and that's the aspect.
Okay. Okay. No, that's, I didn't know which way would be the best to do it and.
Will we still be contracting with supplemental coverage too? You know, it'll be forty-four grand a month?
Oh, no, that would be dog.
Okay. No, we would assume that liability.
Okay.
But in the end, when we do the interview, we set the date for the interview, we will have representation there. And essentially, your employee working for us, so if those needs or what your wishes are, then we'll work through that. But yes, if those are the hours you would desire them to work.
Okay. Okay. No, that was, that was, when we were talking on the phone, I thought, well, I'm gonna put it out there. That way you guys can get a little bit of a chance to talk about it beforehand.
Eliminating that cost, that extra cost we will pay for the vehicles is what I was thinking there, so.
Right. Yeah. So. What will you need from us besides a signed contract?
At this point, as long as we're in agreement on that, I'll get a hold of the attorney tomorrow and have him contact your attorney to draw it up. And we'll get it signed and that'll be it. And then we'll, we'll post it to whoever is, you know, to do it. We'll set the interviews and get somebody in.
Okay. Is that Bill Fisher or?
Spencer Feigman.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Is our, is our legal. But once we get, we know we're moving forward on this, then we'll get the job posted, get our selective candidates pool. And then set a date where some, you can have representation to essentially do the interview. We'll sit there with you, but it'll be your interview. So, however you want to have.
Right. Well, I would probably, my board members and probably Tim Claxton, which is our attorney. And that'd probably be it unless, you know.
Yeah. Other thing too, and I didn't touch on it, as far as the price, the actual price of the people in officer will depend on how much, how many years of experience the officer has. So, if you, uh, choosing somebody that's newer to the department, it's gonna be lower. If somebody has more experience, it'll be higher because they get, they make more money the longer they've been on the department.
Right.
So.
Okay. Yeah. Now, we're, we were in agreement, correct? Yeah. Everybody, yeah. And you're in agreement, right, Rich?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. No, we were all in agreement and, you know, just wanted to formalize it and.
Well, and that's why I wanted to come down, meet you in person, talk to you in person, so we can all, make sure we're all understanding it together and don't have any problems going down the road.
Right. And the office is right there. It'll, it'll have, uh, well, we're just putting fiber optic in for the internet and so that, yes. Cause I know at one time they had talked about using satellites and I don't know if that ever.
That is by, was by desire for the use of technology to download video, so we don't have to drive clear downtown. That would be, uh, a, a good way to get us out here. Since you're doing the community resource officer, that would be better because there'll be a point, we have invested into some technology. We have got to get it implemented where we are able to download video via wireless. It's just a matter of getting all that installed in the car. And then once we're able to move forward with body cameras, that would be part of it. So, uh, we don't necessarily need a, a fiber optic line now to get this done. However, uh, I welcome the, uh, location out in the county as urban sprawl moves forward out. And, uh, because at some point out in the future, I don't know, we'll be playing with gasoline engine vehicles. It'll be more, uh, electric vehicles as I plan for the future. I don't know. It's not too far out in the distance, distant future, so we're gonna have to lay some groundwork with infrastructure, charging stations and that kind of thing. So.
Right.
Um, that's, I'm trying to look down the road. I wish I had an answer to what it, what that solid date would be, but when it comes to police vehicles, I may not have an option of gasoline engines anymore. It's in not too distant future, so.
Right. Yeah. No. And, and if, we would be willing to work with you guys as far as, as getting the infrastructure.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. But it starts with that office. It starts with that ownership and it starts with that contact. So, my goal is to develop that relationship and I welcome bringing the community resource officer out here.
Right. Okay.
You want any further questions? If something comes up, feel free to reach out to us. We can sit down and, uh, dig into it deeper. I know the biggest thing was a cost estimate. And again, it, it may be a little different on the, on the policeman salary, which Carrie explained. It just depends on who we end up with.
Right.
The, that one is kind of middle of the road, fifteen years of experience, so that looks kind of, you know, it's a good middle of the road example.
Okay. Yeah. No, that's, yeah. No, that way it, it, you know, it shows us where we're going and, you know, and I, I, I think we'll probably have a good longer relationship.
Well, I certainly hope so.
Yeah.
Well, whatever we can do to, to service Monroeville and the town, that, that's our, that's our job and that's our goal.
Okay. Alrighty.
Yeah. Any questions, whatever, just call me.
I'll just call you. I got your direct line, so, yeah.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Take care.
Thanks. You're welcome. Thank you. Okay.
Just have this, this testing job description that we.
Hey, you're welcome. Got any questions? We've already answered. Thank you. Well, the biggest thing was the infrastructure, the fiber optics, the cradle point.
It'll still be, we need it up there, so.
Okay.
Still a good thing.
Always good to see you.
You as well.
Take care.
Be careful. Be safe.
Thank you.
There you go.
Dan. I really don't have anything to add with that, uh, with the snow we just had. If you guys hear any complaints about any damages or anything, just let me know. We've got with a nasty one to plow. We just have a no win situation, so, um, if you hear anything, just let me know. We'll fix whatever.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Okay.
Unless you're Rick.
Right.
Your other thing, I guess, is, did you find anything out from the commissioners about the fire district or territory?
Yes. I had a two hour meeting with them all the other day. Uh, they're tending to lean towards southwest. So.
So, they don't think it'd be a good thing to do our own?
Well, they thought it would be a better thing to do our own than it would be to go in with New Haven. But he says if you could go in with southwest, he said, I think we could encourage that. And I thought, okay. We just need to make sure we've got everything covered, no matter what. And no matter what, no matter what happens, whether we go with southwest or we go with us, Hoagland and Jackson, taxes are gonna go up.
Oh, yeah. It's gonna go up. It's going up no matter what we decide. If they come in, our taxes are going up and we, and that might say so, or. And the other thing is, is.
I think the big thing about that is we know that it's going up one, one way or the other. But this way we can pick our poison.
Well, right.
And they can still be in charge of us and not somebody else telling us.
What we're doing.
Amongst your group, what is the feeling there between southwest and us, Hoagland, Jackson? I'm, I'm just throwing that out there because I, I think, I think that's important that the people that's here are still happy too.
I, I guess, I think we'd be better off with us, Hoagland and Jackson, but some of the guys kind of think that. And nothing against southwest, but we was talking a little bit and southwest, I don't know if you guys know, but they do not have paramedics here.
Right.
All they got's their EMTs. So, if we went in with southwest, we're not gonna have any paramedics, so.
I guess we're not gaining anything.
Other than we'll be twenty-four, seven for EMTs.
You'd still have to have some type of mutual agree, aid agreement with either TRA or East Central, which would be your next one in. Uh, so you'd still be, your taxes are gonna go up and you're not gonna be guaranteed any better service as far as medic service. You're guaranteed your quality service. Yeah. You're guaranteed your paid staff twenty-four, seven coverage as far as a basic and a fire service. But I think you'd have to look at what the citizens are gonna, you know, the citizens at the end of the day, they're looking, they don't care who comes. They just want somebody to show up. But they also, I think, I think they're gonna start balking when you see your taxes go up. And then all of a sudden you have maybe an added bill for a paramedic service if you require the services. On top of that, you might start having more questions about that. I think, I think the station wise is kind of split as far as some people, I think we all agree, if we could pull it off ourselves, we'd like to do it ourselves. With Jackson, Monroe and, uh, Hoagland. But I think you're kind of torn. You got some of the, I don't wanna say the older guys, but you got some of the guys that have been around that wanna go kind of the south, southern, southwest. And then you got some of the younger guys that have no problem, you know, going with East Central. But some of those, they also don't have any, they're not landowners. So, that's the other part of that too, so. But at the end of the day, like I said, you go back to what are you getting for the price of service? Like what services are you getting for that price? Is what it's gonna come down to. Taxes are going up regardless.
What does that do to us out in Edgerton? Is that, you guys service us out there, right?
Correct. Correct.
So, we're talking that full area then.
Cause that's Jackson Township. Yes. Yeah. That's Jackson Township.
Yeah.
And Cameron and I are both residents in Jackson Township.
I live right across from you.
I guess I probably should have made the announcement before. This is Cameron Waters. He is our fire chief. Is it this year? Generally, he's, he's, uh, first assistant.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
But, yeah. It's something we're still gonna have to keep working on.
Is he central, the only option with paramedics then?
Closest, yes. Next in, yes. So, it would.
With you and Jackson or just with us?
See how long this river is gonna be in existence.
That's, that's.
That's their issue.
Because it, we're, we're running into that issue as it is and we have a contract with them.
Cause the city of Four Winds going after.
Southwest also has a mutual aid with paramedic service and it's through Three Rivers. But they also, they have been working more with the void and surrounding departments that are already paramedic service because of the TRAs. Three River, you know, services problems they're having with staffing for coverage. So, yeah.
I probably myself, I think we would be better off if we were in control of our own destiny. Okay? I, I mean, nothing against southwest. I just think, I, I, I guess the more players, the, the more players you've got, the, the more, the more, the more difficult it's gonna be to take care of yourself.
There is a way, I mean, if we went with ourselves, your, your medic, medic side of it, EMS side of it, you're certified to the highest certification of your actual member. So, you could, we could, as a territory or a board, a district, you could actually hire a paramedic. And then he could maybe have a paramedic service for the whole district territory. He'd be in charge of it and then, but you'd have to also have more than one paramedic, cause they're gonna get burned out quick. So, you would have to hopefully have your current medics willing to recert and, uh, advance into the paramedic field, which is a lot more schooling. And I think it's gonna be harder to get people to do it because of the schooling that are already current EMTs unless they want to, unless they aren't guaranteed full-time employment in that service. Cause then your pay's gonna reflect that. So, there is a way to get paramedic service with ourselves. It would just be a matter of hiring it.
Hiring it.
Correct.
Do you think that, um, this is something that needs to be acted on more quickly than later? We've, we've been talking about this for years and years. And even if we decided to do something, what's, what's the earliest we could have it happen? Two years?
Two years.
Two years?
And from today.
Just a year.
It's two years, I think.
Yeah. Because you're gonna have to have your, you're gonna have to have your studies done. Just like East Central did, just like Southwest did. And then, I mean, that's a year study worth. And then you've got all the sign and all.
All your meetings, everything. You have to have so many public hearings and everything else. It has to be, whatever you present the first meeting has to be set in stones. It has to be the next consecutive ones after that have to be exactly word for word what you presented or you get accused of things.
I, I had went to those meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's, you know, it's not easy and it's not a quick process. It's not, not, it's not gonna happen overnight.
Yeah. It's, it's probably at least a two-year process, maybe.
And that's if you decided right now.
That's if you were.
East Central, East Central, it was minimum of two years. It was just over two years.
Because, you know, if we sit here and said, well, is Hoagland gonna be in it? Is, who's gonna be in it? And then all of a sudden, we're a year down the road, we still haven't done anything yet.
Yeah.
And that's the other thing. Do we know Jackson is wanting to go in? Yes, we know that Hoagland and Monroe, Monroeville want to be, I have talked about it. But are we a hundred percent sure that Jackson's on board? Cause if not, that could throw him, you know, you could be, you could be.
Jackson, Jackson really doesn't have a choice.
They're either gonna go with East Central or whatever we would have.
He's either gotta go with us or them. And he had told us, but I, I've met with him. And he had said that he would much rather not go with New Haven.
Right.
I think he said, I think he's far away since they won.
As far as the money goes, I know it's gonna go up. I just don't want it to go up as much as New Haven did.
Well, I think it'll probably go up more.
It's probably gonna go up more, cause that's based off of your taxes, your tax, uh, assessment, value of everything. That's what, that's part of the study. You don't know until you get the study back and then you can.
Correct.
Well, it, it may go up more, but we weren't getting a full-time service with East Central, so.
Right.
You, you're not really comparing apples to apples if you're just looking at how much does it go up?
What was it? It was split between us and Hoagland, right?
So.
Can we raise the taxes without a voter referendum?
Yeah. On that, you can.
As long as it's through a territory or district.
Right.
You can, cause it's its own thing. It's literally the boards of every township or town involved. It would be the, their board members have individual vote and say. And then you put a board together, if, if you go territory, you can go in the district. Every township or entity has their own member and then some, like the fire department, EMS, everything would have their own member also. So, that way they all have a vote, a vote. They have their own board. You'd still have, you know, trustees, stuff like that.
Trustee, we would have one. The trustees would have one.
Correct.
You guys would have one.
The turkey partners then would have to disband, I believe. They can't, they can't, or can they contract out to the, to the nonprofits?
No. It would be, you would be all one entity at that point.
Okay. So, the, the nonprofits would have to, have to disband.
Whatever you call it, it would be, I mean, obviously you're, there's a whole bunch of legalities in with it. But if you, like say, if we have a loan on our truck, it's through the township and, you know, EMS has a loan on their truck with the township. They keep those loans until they're paid off. But that, the board itself, the territory and district board would encompass everything. It would just be, those loans would still be in, off of that. It wouldn't be on the board themselves. So, you'd still have your prior obligations.
Yeah. Whoever has their prior obligation to third debt, they're still gonna be in debt.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a lot to it. So.
But you, you guys' feeling is that you would rather it be us, Hoagland and Jackson?
If it can be in house.
If it could be done this way.
Yeah. Yeah. Cause it stays local.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
But then, I mean.
But you also have to look at financially, if you join southwest and it's substantially cheaper to get the same service than.
You wouldn't be getting the same service. If we could guarantee a paramedic service here in our area, that would be huge. And if Southwest.
I'm not saying that's not huge. I just think that's.
But Southwest, you're not.
Potential pipe dream down the future. I don't know that that's necessary. How many percent of the calls that the EMS go on is actually a paramedic call? Probably a very few, or a very low percentage is going to be a paramedic call.
I think Sam said most of the trans, most of our transports.
Yeah. So, is that a necessary thing that you're gonna pay that extra salary for something that's going to get used five percent of the time or ten percent of the time?
If you don't pay the salary, you're gonna have to contract with somebody.
Correct. That, that, I would wanna see those numbers differences, what's that gonna cost?
Study, study.
Yeah. That would be part of the study.
So, in that study, we would be checking out what it would cost us to go with southwest and what it would cost us to stay.
And we can also go through our run data from the past couple of years. Part of that study would also bring up, you know, did we have an assist with a paramedic? Or what was it? Was it a priority one? There's a lot of them that are priority ones that probably at times could be paramedic and should be paramedic.
I think Sam has that broke out.
And sometimes.
Sam's got that.
Yeah.
So, that's all.
Yeah. That'd be part of that study also.
And, and a lot of the transports potentially will leave too, once the nursing home.
Yeah.
Moves on. I mean, there's a lot of runs out there.
A lot.
If you would decide to go southwest, what's the time frame on that? You'd still be about the same.
Yeah. Because they're gonna have.
Well, here's the other thing. You would have to have, Hoagland would have to be in on that. Like Monroeville, we would have no say unless a hundred percent of Hoagland was involved with that, with the townships, with Madison and all that. Because you have to be con.
Contiguous.
Yeah.
Be contiguous.
Yes.
The only reason I say I don't think it'll be that long, is they was what, two or three, five departments southwest? They pretty much had no choice. The county committee that said, this is district here and this is the district and.
They just recently did that.
I think it was at least a year though. It took them at least a year, I think.
But the county forced them to do it.
Yeah. Cause we were with Woodburn and I were with you guys.
Probably first things first, there was a, there was a, part of a study done with the auditor. The auditor could tell me if we was separate, what the cost would be.
Nick put together some numbers for Jane, I think.
Right. Yes. Yeah. And, and I'd like to see what those numbers are versus the numbers of southwest. And that would give us a little bit better indication. If it's reasonably close, I would say we'd just go by ourselves. But if it's not.
Do we already have the breakdown of what southwest would do?
No.
I think it would also be interested with that. Uh, it would also be seeing what your actual services are providing, so we can compare apples to apples and not, you know.
Right. No, I, I agree as to what the service will be. Yeah.
If that's included in that study or whatever they did, that'd be interesting to see.
Yeah. Because Nick had those numbers.
Cause he called me and asked me some questions on it to figure out what Jane was trying to put together.
And I'm sure he will, he's, I'm sure he's still got.
Yeah.
So, let, let me, let me see if I can get those numbers. And then I'll call southwest and talk to them. I need to talk to Jane in the meantime, because she's gotta go for us to go.
She's the key.
Yeah.
And she don't go, then we don't go with southwest, true.
Right.
You know?
I take it that the commissioners had talked to her, but I, they never said that.
I wanna say one other thing. I know we talked about it in our officer meeting. If we were to do it ourselves, and you can double check with the legalities of it. But the understanding is if we could do it ourselves, it would be more of a territory than a district, because we wouldn't have a tax base of a district. A tax base on a district in order for, to have sole control over everything. I think it's a billion dollars, the tax assessment. In order for somebody that like, so like the county, if we went district, the county commissioners could still come in and say, you're doing this, this and this, even though you are a district. But a territory, you rule your area. Your board is in charge of all of it. Nobody can come in and actually say what you're doing with your, with your stuff.
Right.
So, that's the difference between a territory and a district. And I would say, I think we talked about it a little bit, we touched base a little bit on our officer meeting about it would probably be a territory or a district. Just so we would still keep it local and we'd still have say in what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Toby.
I do not have anything.
Okay.
Nope. Four oh eight oh, your own app, right?
Yeah. We had talked about that and that's been addressed and we're working on it.
And then I got one, it's not an issue. I wanna thank Dan for coaching my grandkids in basketball. You've done a good job, bud. Appreciate you about taking your time volunteering and doing a full-time job. That's it.
How can the Edgerton, um, residents there get any input into this? Cause basically.
Because basically, we were left out because we're Woodburn, and you guys got it, so, you know, we don't have nothing there.
Very in that decision.
I say, when you say left out, we're left out.
As far as in part of the conversation.
That's your, that's your township trustee?
Yeah, when, what, you're saying you were left out of the conversation as far as where the East Central, right, is when the East Central was doing their thing?
When, when it all changed to where now you guys are servicing our area?
Did you go?
We're, Woodburn was servicing our area.
I guess, did you, uh, did you go to any of the public hearings? So that was the one thing that with, with the actual territory and district, and when that, when the talks come about, it's publicized in like papers, news, whatever, it has to be, they have to be, it has to be a public, a public hearing. So that way, it's a standard. So.
Like our little area with their restaurant. We don't have, we don't have, you know, we have you. Said, you know, how many of you know I should watch the news anymore, I mean, really? I have quite a few.
And it really comes down to your township trustee, he's the one that makes the decision in the board.
The board, they didn't want anything to do with it. Yeah.
The ID form or anything that you're gonna face, it's like.
I understand that it doesn't matter, I mean, we got that, it's just like Troy.
But at the end of the day, doesn't really matter who shows up, as long as show, somebody showing up to help you. When you have an emergency.
I had COVID about nine years.
That's what I'm saying, at the end of the day, doesn't, as long as you know somebody's coming, that's all that matters. Right, no, and I, I agree with what you're saying.
But as far as, you know, if your taxes are gonna go up, I'd like to give part of that conversation.
And that's where the public meetings, like, you have to actually announce when your public meetings are, and not the day before.
Uh, just for Dan, you said to let you know about damage?
Yeah.
When my wife was shoved when she broke it, corner on the siding and then it dumped out, so if you can get that. She's, she was just chucking.
Oh, you had her shovel, you should have been out there shoveling.
Well, thankfully she parked her in front of it for about four days and I didn't notice it till last night, when I pulled in, I was like, what?
The only other thing I was gonna say is, when I met with the commissioners, I had asked them for a fairly large sum of money. And I haven't gotten it yet, but I was told that I, we will get it.
And what is this one, a book?
Uh, the industrial park.
Oh, good.
That would, that would, we have a gap in money and it's substantial. But, uh, I should know here in a few days, and if I, if I find out, I will let you guys know. Because they're actually ready to go to bed again.
Would it, I don't know if it'd help or not to let them know that we're ready to go to bed, to get that signed.
Well, I don't wanna really.
Right, I don't.
Yeah. I'll, I'll let it take its natural course. Uh, motion to adjourn. I was a favorite city, if I miss a guy. Yeah, Rich.